We're going to call this meeting to order. I apologize for the delay. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This meeting complies with the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act. Notice that this meeting has been published on the Commissible Bulletin Board and the applicable newspapers.
Thank you, Ms. Cipriani. Before we get started, I'd just like to give a warm welcome to our two new members, Mr. Raymond Tremmer and Ms. Leah Cusano. Welcome to the board. Thank you for volunteering. We appreciate it. Roll call, please, Kathleen.
Mr. Hyman.
Here.
Mr. Martins.
Here.
Ms. Rosal.
Here.
Mr. Tremmer.
Here.
Ms. Cusano.
Here.
Dr. Hofstein.
Here.
Ms. Bradley.
Here.
Okay. Ms. Cipriani, we have resolutions for this evening?
Yes, this is Resolution 2025-21A. The board members who were here at the last meeting may recall that we had done a resolution for Swanborn. This is an amended resolution, though that had been provided to the applicant previously. We did not receive their, I did not receive their comments until after the resolution had been adopted.
And thank you very much, Board Member Hyman. And so, but I feel that those comments were valid, so that's why there is an amended resolution before you. That is Resolution of the Township, the Jackson Township Zoning Word of Adjustment, granting amended preliminary and final major subdivision with conditional use variance relief pursuant to NJSA 4055-D-70 Sub-D Sub-3.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please.
I'm sorry?
Resolution.
The new members are not. Mr. Hyman.
Yes.
Mr. Martins.
Yes.
Ms. Rosal.
Yes.
Dr. Hofstein.
Yes.
Ms. Bradley.
Yes.
Is that our only one?
I wonder. Well, I put a check mark on it, but we'll do it anyway.
Okay. All right. I have minutes. Is that your only resolution for this evening?
Yes.
All right. I have minutes for the 4/17 of 2024 meeting. Eligible to vote are Mr. Hyman, Dr. Hofstein, and myself. I need a motion and a second, please.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Hyman.
Yes.
Dr. Hofstein.
Yes.
Ms. Bradley.
Yes.
All right. I have several vouchers, so bear with me. I have a voucher for the zoning board clerk for minutes from the 4/17/24 meeting, which we just approved. I have, so that would be Dr. Hofstein, Mr. Hyman, and myself. I need a motion and a second, please.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Dr. Hofstein.
Yes.
Mr. Hyman.
Yes.
Ms. Bradley.
Yes. And then I have minutes from the August 6, 2025 meeting, and then the recording
secretary invoice for this evening, 9/325. So I need a motion and a second to play both of those as well.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Dr. Hofstein.
Yes.
Mr. Hyman.
Yes.
Ms. Bradley.
Yes. Oh, and you can include, I'm sorry, Mr. Martin.
You can vote on that one as well, on Mr. Bell.
Mr. Martins.
Yes.
Ms. Rosal.
Yes.
All right. Do we have any announcements for this evening, Ms. Cipriani?
Yes. Number three on the agenda, applicant Douglas Phillips. That has been moved to the September 17 meeting. No additional notice is required.
Okay. And we need to swear in our professionals?
Please raise your right hand. You swear the testimony you provide, or swear or affirm that the testimony you will provide to this board will be the truth and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Please state your name and position for the record.
Mark Romeyer, Board Engineer.
Ernie Peters, Board Planner.
Gina Tumalo, Assistant Zoning Officer.
Steve Mazur, Board Traffic Engineer.
Thank you.
Any matters for discussion this evening or administrative approvals? I don't believe so. Correct?
Correct.
All right. So we are going to move right on to applicant number one, and I'm going to apologize if I mess up your name, sir. Yahoshua and Yehudas Levin, variance 3539. You can come forward to the microphone, sir. Ms. Cipriani is going to swear.
Oh, I'm sorry. Could you please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you will give before this board will be the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay. Mr. Levin, why don't you tell us what you're trying to do?
Okay. We're looking to build a 18 by 24 foot vary, foot deck. This deck will have minimal impact on neighbors. It will not block sunlight, views, or privacy. It's also consistent with the neighborhood character, as many nearby homes have similar decks. This deck adds safety and functionality by providing steers that can serve as an emergency exit, exit, and enhances a reasonable use of my property. Finally, due to the lot's layout, meeting the full 35-foot setback would make it practically impossible to add a usable deck, which creates a hardship. For these reasons, I respectfully ask for your approval of this variance.
Okay. Can you tell us a little bit about the deck? I know you said 18 by 24. What type of material?
I don't remember the...
Okay. All right. Any other questions, Mr. Levin? Mr. Romeyer?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Just to clarify, where 35 feet is required from the rear yard property line? Can you please confirm you are seeking a setback of 18.25 feet? Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And the applicant did provide a architectural schematic that shows the dimensions with the stairs. And I believe everything else was covered. Behind your property is some wooded area. Is that correct?
There's some, it's coming from the second floor, so it's a walkout basement. So there's like cement over there, and then with this would be on, on the, coming from the, the second floor on the back. It's really the first floor on the front.
Okay. And you, in your opinion, it won't negatively affect the neighbors in the area, right?
Correct.
Okay. That's all I have.
Mr. Peters?
Madam Chair, a couple of things. The, the survey document that shows the sketch that was described references a subdivision, Hampshire Hills. Board should take note that 35-foot rear yard setback is consistent throughout the project. And so, this is not a unique situation. Everyone in Hampshire Hills has a 35-foot setback. I also noted on, and I apologize, I don't, we didn't mark these, but there's a grading plan from 2006 that was provided that appears to show an easement for a storm manhole in the rear of the property. And I think the board should take note that the easement doesn't belong to the applicant or to the board, and I would hazard a guess that it belongs to the township if it's a storm sewer manhole. If it's a sanitary sewer manhole, it may belong to the M U I. And that should, the board choose to approve the application, a condition should be that they need to go get approval from whoever owns the easement. Because we can't say to someone who owns an easement, we're going to let someone put footings, foundations, and a deck over your property, especially if the property is encumbered by this and has been encumbered by this since the creation of the lot. Okay? Thank you.
Ms. Levin, I'm sorry, on that note, there's a lot of writing on the survey, so forgive my question. Can you, Mr. Peters kind of brought up what I wanted to ask about. How far from the back property line is the manhole easement? And how far will that, how close will that be to the bottom of the stairs?
Okay, so, yes, I wanted to clarify there. I don't know exactly, but it would be, it would be pretty much towards by the end of the deck. That, 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 that manhole would be around where, where the, where the line would be, where, by the end of the deck, that's where the manhole would be. But just to clarify, this would be, this is a second story deck, so the manhole is, is being 15 feet under. If, if it's under that line, it's right around there. I don't know exactly, but if it's under it, it's not, it's not being there two feet on top of it. It's being 10 feet on top of it.
I'm sorry. Let me re-ask my question. How far from the stairs, from the bottom of the stairs? Because that's where the distance to the rear yard property line is. How far from the stairs is the manhole?
I don't know. It's, it's around there. So I don't, I don't know. I don't know. I can't, I can't guess.
Mr. Peters, you were going to say something else. I apologize.
I'm certainly not going to guess. The responsibility of providing answers is the applicant's, not ours. Again, my concern simply is, is the manhole, regardless of whether it interferes with the landing for the deck, the manhole is surrounded by an easement, which appears to be 20 feet in width. So from the, your submitted grading plan shows the house around 37 and a half feet from the rear property line. If there's a 20-foot easement, that would mean the easement is 17 and a half foot from the house. So if he's within 20 feet of the rear property line, he's going to be in someone else's easement. He just needs to get their approval. Because the post that holds the deck up is going to be in their easement. Whether or not the stairs get in the way, quite frankly, that's, with all due respect, their responsibility. If the board doesn't have enough information, if you want to see additional information, you need to tell the applicant that. I just wanted to make it clear that the board has no authority to grant approval in a, in a drainage easement. We don't know who it belongs to, and certainly it's not our responsibility to reconcile the easement. It would be a condition of the approval of board grants.
Have you been in touch with the Jackson Township M U A? Because that's where, on the survey, that indicated whose it is. Have you been in touch with them?
I have not. It's my first time realizing this, this problem.
All right. Any other additional questions, Mr. Levin? Go ahead, Dr. Hofstein.
The staircase, the way it runs it, it appears, it appears that, that it runs right in front of those sliders. Is it that close to it? Where nobody could leave the house through the sliders at the bottom?
The stairs would be, would be on the, further, like towards, more in the back, not, not, not on the house side. It would be on, it would be further away from, from the, from the house.
So somebody could get out that door in the back?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Another question. If the, this is the... If the, this is to Ernie, if, if the staircase was turned where that little platform is to face into the backyard, would, would that erase some of the problem with the sewer easement? Although instead of a straight, coming down straight, it, then, there's a little platform, and then if you turn the stairs to go directly into the back, backyard?
It would be possible to make the deck smaller to avoid being in the easement. But regarding the stair layout, I think the current layout is least intrusive in the easement.
Mr. Martins, Mr. Hyman? So, again, there's a lot of writing on the survey. Um, I wasn't quite sure of the distance. For me, I'm a little uncomfortable approving it, as Mr. Peters pointed out, not knowing if there's approval from them, because we can't grant your approval to build on their easement. Even if we were to approve it, we can't grant your approval to build on their easement. So my recommendation, and I'm open to Mr. Peters or Mr. Romeyer or anyone else's suggestions, my recommendation would be to speak with the Jackson MUA first and then to come back. Would you agree, Ms. Cipriani, or you have some other suggestion for me?
Yeah, there are two ways to proceed. So one would be to, uh, adjourn this matter until a later date, during which time you could approach the Jackson MUA. It may not be that there is an intrusion or that there is a, an access issue, um, but that's something that you would need to have them determine, and they would do so. If you give them these documents, then they can take a look at the easement and make that determination. Then you could come back and then give us something in writing, um, from the MUA saying that it would not impair the easement, um, or that they would be able to access it. Alternately, if the desire of the board is to do so, um, then they could grant you the relief, but that relief, as Mr. Peters had said earlier, would be conditioned on getting the approval from the MUA. Um, so that, as a, as a, um, requirement for resolution compliance, before you could get a building permit, you would have to then show that, uh, approval by the MUA. And if they said no, you would have to come back here with a different application.
I, I much prefer the second way if, if possible.
Just to clarify, I believe what Ms. Cipriani is saying is that if you would get in a, if the vo, if the board would vote in affirmative, and you get an approval, it's contingent on the MUA. If the MUA says no, then your case is closed. You would have to submit a new application with a new deck size. If you go the first way, means you just, we put it up for a different date, then you could go to the MUA, see what they say, and then possibly, if they grant you that relief, that's great. And if they don't, then you would revise your plan and come back here, and it wouldn't be a new application. So I don't know what the fees and the charges are involved with the...
I, I still prefer the second way.
So then that's really, um, up to the board. I don't know if the board members, the professionals, any questions? I don't know if you want to open it up to the public?
Any other comments? Any other questions from the board before I open it to the public? All right. Uh, Mr. Levin, just hold on one moment. I'm going to open this to the public. Anyone wishing to come forward, making comments or questions about this application? Seeing no one come forward, I'm going to go ahead and close public session.
Okay, so then the question for the board, whether you want to grant the variance with the condition that was described, uh, regarding the, um, so the options obviously are to deny or to approve. If you approve, certainly, uh, Mr. Peters has suggested, and we've all seen on the plans, that there is an easement, which appears to be held by the Jackson Township MUA. So it would be conditioned on, um, getting consent to the location approved from the Jackson MUA. Um, what you have to consider is whether the benefits of granting this application, uh, sorry, granting this variance outweigh any detriment, um, to the zoning scheme, which obviously does have a 35-foot setback, but that is, of course, the purpose of applying for a variance. And if you determine that the variance would not result in substantial detriment to the public good, that, of course, requires the condition for the easement. So I don't know.
Do we, do we have another choice to carry it?
Yeah, I...
Can I vote for that? I mean, instead of yes or no, can I say, look, I just don't have enough information here. I really want more around exactly what the deck is. Um, you know, the material, all that kind of stuff, and, and something from the MUA. So, I'm not saying yes or no, I'm just saying I don't have enough information. I'd rather just take...
Okay, so those are a couple of, of different questions. Regarding the materials, um, I do believe in, uh, that the, uh, application itself did, uh, describe the materials, um, but if there's specific information that you want, you can certainly have a motion to request that that motion, that that information be provided. Obviously, the applicant has a choice of whether or not to provide that information. Um, but yes, you could say specifically, but you need to say what that information is that you, uh, would want if there's going to be such a motion.
So I've, I've been to the property. Um, I looked at the yard. He has a pool there with a fence. The, the photography is like that. Um, this is truly the only place, I believe, that he could build a deck in the area. Um, behind the home is a forested area. I don't think this is going to be any detriment to any of the neighbors whatsoever from that, from the back of the house to the side. I think he's still meaning those setbacks. Um, and I don't have any issue with the actual application, other than the concern with the, um, easements from the MUA. So if they were to get approval, um, I would be happy to make a motion to approve a contingent on the MUA approval.
Would you be happy to make such a motion, or are you making one?
Okay, so, so I, I, I... I was leaving it open for discussion, but I would be, yes, I will make a motion to approve contingent on MUA approval.
Mr. Martins, I just want to clarify, the reason I ask, even though it's in the application, Ms. Cipriani is right, it is there.
Yes.
Mr. Levens did provide that. Nor, when I got on the board, they said we should always have the applicant state what the materials are. That's why I ask the question all the time, just to clarify that.
Okay.
I also went to the property, Mr. Hyman, I agree with you. My concern was that easement, so when Ernie brought it up, I'm like, okay, so it's not just me.
It's on them.
I, given the topography, and, I mean, there were plenty of other homes in the development that had a second-story deck, whether it was the 35 or not, obviously, I didn't have to tape measure. So I don't have a problem with the application. My concern was just the easement. So if you've indeed made a motion, I would second it, and I have no problem approving it contingent on the approval from the MUA.
I believe...
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Tremmer?
That's okay. Can I ask Mr. Peters a question?
Absolutely.
Mr. Peters, you said that no property on Hampshire Hills has gone into that 35-foot setback?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
The 35-foot setback? Nobody else has gone past that in Hampshire Hills?
No, I didn't.
No, I, I didn't testify to the conditions out at Hampshire Hills. What I can tell you is that Hampshire Hills, the entire project is in the same zone. Everyone's got the same setback. So it's not a hardship, because somehow he ended up with a 35-foot. Everyone's got a 35-foot rear yard setback in Hampshire Hills. I wanted to make sure when the board weighs the testimony, that you understand that 35 feet is a standard throughout the community. So it's not as though he's an outlier and he can...
Can I just speak to that? It's, it's a smaller property. A bigger property wouldn't, would, would make it much easier to, to fulfill that requirement. Since it's a small property, it's not possible without, without the variance.
Right, so the question is whether there's a hardship variance, there's nothing unusual, aside from the si, the size issue, um, that was the hardship?
That's kind of what I was curious about, is this the first of its kind, or is this common there?
Like I said, I did, there were plenty of other homes that had a second-story deck, whether they were 30, to the 35 feet, I can't tell you. But his backyard, there is a pool. Um, it is got an odd topography. So there is a bit of a hardship there, but it's not the, it's, the 35-foot setback is across the neighborhood, is what Mr. Peters is saying.
Very good, thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Well, I think we have a motion, uh, and a second, so roll call, please.
Mr. Hyman?
Yes.
Mr. Martins?
Yes.
Ms. Rosal?
Yes.
Mr. Tremmer?
Yes.
Ms. Cusano?
Yes.
Dr. Hofstein?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Thank you very much, I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
If I may just make a general comment, not about any case. Um, I, I do appreciate the, um, I'll be happy to make a motion to allow us, because once you make a motion, then you second it, it's like, we go into roll call. So I appreciate, you know, giving us that, so we have the time to talk and go through and deliberate.
My, my intention was certainly not, and never would be, to prevent the board from discussing the matter fully. I was simply trying to understand whether a motion had actually been made, or if it was, so...
Correct, so I was just leaving it open.
Right.
I was making a comment, saying that I would just leave it open. I didn't want to cut anybody off from making their comments.
And I appreciate that.
All right, I, I, I appreciate the intent, and, uh, will be, uh, less, uh, quick to, to speak.
Okay, we're going to move on to applicant number two. Mr. Abraham Cohen, 16 Scarborough Drive. You can come to the microphone, please.
Will you swear or affirm that the testimony you will give before this board will be the truth and nothing but the truth?
I affirm, yes.
Thank you. And just, uh, if you could say your name and address for the record.
Abraham Cohen, 16 Scarborough Drive.
And you can hear already from being in here for the first one, it's kind of hard to hear. So please feel free to yell, it's fine. If, why don't you tell us what you're trying to do, sir?
Okay, so we're trying to build a, a move-out air fence, um...
You have to speak a little louder, sorry.
Trying to move out our fence, um, further out. We live on a corner lot, so basically, my whole entire backyard is kind of a side yard when you're on a corner lot. So we want to move out, move out the, um, move the fence out further. Yeah, so we want to move it out to the side and, um, to the back, towards the front, actually. Towards the front of the house and towards the side. That's one thing. Another thing is, I think they said I need a, a variance, or I have to mention about the, um, the play area that we're get, want to get the swing set as well. Initially, it was in there for, um, on the side towards the street, but since, I want to just put it on the, um, towards the back of the house. So it won't be in the front, won't be in the, in the front.
Okay, so initially, it was towards the front, but you want to put that, the play yard to the back now?
Correct.
Is the fence already up, is that the fence?
There's a fence there, we want to extend it.
Okay, you're moving the fence.
Push it back out, yeah, on two sides.
And you're going to keep the same type of fence, six-foot solid white?
Yes.
Yes, Christopher?
Oh, no, because it says the applicant is seeking a height variance, so it's not the height, it's the distance, so...
Well, because he's a corner lot.
Right.
He's got quote-unquote two front yards.
Right.
There's an existing fence here.
Yeah.
Off the back and here. He wants to blow it out this way and blow it forward as well.
Okay.
Right, so it's going to, I, I don't know if you had a chance to see, but there's a large tree. He wants to move it on the outside of that.
Right.
And right now, if I'm correct, it's up, it's coming off the back of the house. He wants to move it to the front of the house and come this way.
Correct.
I said that correctly?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm sorry?
So I don't think he wants to move to the front of the house. I think he's wanting to move it up a little bit more forward.
The front edge of the house, correct?
Towards, towards, towards the front. Meaning, right now, it's attached to the, to the, to the back of the house.
Correct, so I, I did go down to the property to look at it. Um, you do have utilities about in the middle of your house. There's a window there with, you know, you have the electric meter there and things like that. So if you were to go all the way to the front of the house, then that would be an issue with the utilities, um, having access, getting in and getting out.
Having a fence, then having a door. That's an issue?
I'm just trying to understand, from the diagram that I think that I saw on the, here, I thought it was to about the middle of the house. I don't know, I didn't, I didn't realize that it was that dotted line all the way to the front of the house. There's just a lot of different lines on there, so...
Yeah.
Yeah, I was going to say, it was a little confusing for me. I got it, I get it. Um, Mr. Romeyer, comments?
Yes, if we could just clarify a couple of things, please. The, uh, the swing set, can you clarify, where are you looking to place that?
Towards the, the back of my property, the side of the pool.
In relation to the swimming pool, would it be near the...
On the right side, looking...
So anywhere between the house and the street is considered front yard area?
Right.
And I, I believe you would most likely need to be in that area and still require variance relief for the playground. Just to be safe, that would be my recommendation. So I would, we could talk about that, uh, with the board further. But at least we have an idea of where you're trying to put the playground. Along the back property line, closer to the pool, but, um, still within the front yard area, we'll assume.
The front yard?
Well, because, I think what Mr. Romeyer is trying to say is because you have your corner lot, your side is what we would call a front yard as well.
Correct, on Hastings, yes, correct.
So even though you don't want, even though you don't want to put it as far up front to the front of your house, as you did, it's still considered the front yard.
Yeah, that's part of the issue I need a variance, is because it's a corner lot.
Okay, and then for the fence itself, where, how far off your property line are you looking to place the fence along Hastings Court? So the property line is typically just inside the sidewalk, so typically, we require six feet off of that.
So that, yeah, that's, I was told that, yeah, because of the right-of-way for, I think...
And then along Scarborough, you're proposing to be in line with the front of your house, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and that's a six-foot solid fence?
Correct, the same one that exists currently.
Okay. Um, it appears that the proposed location would not be located within the site triangle area of the corner, so there's no issue with that. And that's all I have at this time.
Mr. Peters?
The applicant has agreed that the proposed six-foot-high fence would be no closer than six feet to the Hastings Court right-of-way. That's good information to have in our resolution, so the zoning officer and the construction official understand it. Um, we should probably pick a number from the fence to the swing set, because in theory, the swing set is in violation of the front yard setback, because it's between Hastings Court and the building. So even though, when you look at it, it's the side of his house, from a land use perspective, Hastings is a front yard. Anything between the house and Hastings is a front yard. So if you want to pick another number, I assume you want to keep the swing set four feet from the fence? Kids don't go flying into the fence. Trying to figure out how far between the fence and the swing set.
What would, what would you make a, what would be a difference if the swing set is within the fence? What's the difference, how far the swing set is from the fence?
Well, you don't want it too close to the fence, for safety reasons, also being able to mow and keep...
The nature of swings. Gina? We need to make a record here. I'm sorry. That's okay. No, I mean...
I don't know if I...
Please, please say what you were to say, just on the record.
Just wanted to grab the mic. Um, so what we were trying to say, as Mr. Peters said, if you could please give an approximate location of where you wanted the swing set to go, so that the record could reflect that it's going to be X amount of feet from Hastings Court, uh, X amount of feet. However, just a, a little bit more specific for when it goes through zoning approval, for the zoning follow-up.
Yes, I'm just saying, initially, the way I, I put it on, on, on the paper that was submitted was the length. The length would be on Hastings. So in that scenario, I could give you more of like, it would be more room to work with, because the swing set would probably be in the middle, and then there would probably be a good, I don't know, five, 10 feet from the swing set until the, the fence. But now, since the, since the swing set is going, I would like to put it the other way, the, the, the length on, the length towards the back of my house, so... So I pretty much want to use up, I don't know exactly every inch, but I want to pretty much go until the fence. I don't have the exact measurement to know.
That's fine. I think that you've just discussed the orientation. So it's going to be oriented so the length of the swing set will be on the Hastings side. And I think you just testified that you were imagining it, I think you said five to 10 feet from the fence?
Initially. Now it's going to be closer, like probably within a foot or two of the, of the fence. Because it won't, it won't be the full width. It would just be the edge of it, the edge of the, of the fence, like the post, the beam.
So Hastings is here, right? This is Hastings, this is Scarborough. You're saying you want it to be this direction, you want it perpendicular to Hastings. And you wanted a, how far off, what Mr. Peters is trying to ascertain is how far off of Hastings, off that side of the fence, would you want to place this swing set?
It's pretty much going to be off, off, off the fence, like a foot or two.
But if it's a swing set, you're going to need some clearance. That's why Mr. Peters suggested a couple feet off the fence.
Madam Chair, to the extent that the board simply makes a record so the zoning officer can check it so he doesn't have to do this a second time, because the zoning officer doesn't understand what the board approved, he can put the swing set wherever he wants. I don't think we're going to explain to him the need to have some space if the swing portion of the swing set is near the fence. If he wants to have it up against the fence, as long as it's in the resolution, so the zoning officer can approve it, I don't know that it matters to the board. Because it's a variance, we would normally put some sort of dimension so it can be checked and verified. So if the answer is going to be six foot off the right-of-way line, which would mean it's up against the fence, that's okay too. I don't think we're understanding, I don't think the applicant's understanding what we're asking him for.
Right, would, I understand, Mr. Peters, and I just want to make sure that I am, because of that issue, understanding the orientation, because you're, Mr. Feldman, you're saying that you're going to, Mr. Cohen, I'm sorry, you're going to switch it so it would now be that the structure will be on the Hastings side and it will be perpendicular? Is that what you just testified to?
Like, the way my, I don't know if anyone can plug a mouse, but the way my pool is now, so it's like, it goes on the line, so there's the pool. So next to the, like alongside the pool, is going to be the swing set, like towards the right of the pool, straight in the long line.
Does anyone have a pointer?
Ms. Sipriani, can maybe we use some kind of verbiage stating that if approved by the board that the swing set will be located no closer than 10 feet to Hastings Court? Something along those lines, is that acceptable?
Yep.
Should the Board so choose to approve?
Can I show on the, like, could I go there?
Because if the fence is going to be six, that's leaving four feet for clearing, or it doesn't even have to be 10, just something along those lines.
Initially, it was going to be this way, going this way.
Right.
Now I want to flip it to this way.
Right.
So you want it along that back fence?
Correct.
Okay. So we're amending that.
So show us again, I'm sorry. Show us again, Mr. Cohen.
Initially, it was going to be on this way.
Right.
Now I want to make it this way.
So you don't have a plan of what he's proposing for it?
Got it.
No.
Correct. So that's going to be changed and now that's now going to interfere with the pool equipment? That's notated on the plan.
That was ready to be my comment.
It's, I specifically sized it that it doesn't interfere with the pool equipment. Meaning, the swing set that I'm getting, that I want to get, is going to conform, it's going to be after, after the pool equipment.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Romar?
There's a dimension on the survey, 48 feet from the property line to the filter heater, which is shown on the survey. And if his, if his swing set is 32 feet wide, he could fit that between the filter heater and the fence being six foot off the property line. I would recommend the board just specify the playground equipment be at least six feet off Hastings Court. And that would leave him plenty of room, or you could go further, six, seven, eight feet off Hastings Court.
If I could just say, I think it's already off six feet because that's the right-of-way. Right, I'm saying, size, size for that?
The fence would be six feet off the property line, and then you would still have 41 feet between that fence and the heater. And if your playground's 32 feet wide, you would be able to offset your playground at least a few feet off the fence.
Does that make sense?
Yes. Saying it's going to be within the fence, which the fence is, has the six foot right-of-way. So we're not building up until...
I did have another question, looking at your house, so I'm sitting on Scarborough, Scarborough, looking at your house, there is a shed to the left of the house. Is that permitted? Was the variance granted for that? Because I saw information regarding the pool, but I didn't see anything regarding the shed.
I have no idea. I just, I just purchased the house. I have no idea. I just purchased the house. I have no, I don't know anything about the shed.
So you didn't put the shed up?
No.
I mean, only, obviously, I went to look at the property and I'm looking at it going, well, that's in the front yard, in front of the fence, and very close to the house.
Right.
So do we want that to be a condition of approval? I mean...
Just to make sure, right?
Either make sure that it's permitted?
I mean, since it's here, just to make sure it's taken care of.
Right, that's, well, that's something, well, we just don't have a plan for that.
Usually, that's what we do.
Right, but that's something, I also don't have access to see if that was even permitted to begin with.
Any other questions for Mr. Cohen?
Actually, just for our, I just want to put on the record for our experts. So you guys are comfortable that you understand what the proposal is, right? And, and with enough time, you're comfortable that any unintended consequences that you've contemplated in your, okay with this?
Correct, Mr. Martins. That was the suggestion that I made earlier, that we may not, if the Board so chooses, we don't need an exact location for X amount of feet for the playground equipment. Kind of the same verbiage that we would use with the fence, no closer than six feet. If that's what the board's comfortable with for, if they choose to approve the fence, then that should be sufficient for our zoning approval, for our resolution follow-up. But with that shed, I don't know how we want to address that.
Right, okay.
Since, if you want to add that one, we would just need, we would just need some more details for it.
Well, in the past, we've always included, if there was something else discovered on the property, we'd just make sure that that's addressed.
Sure, absolutely.
So I would just make sure that it's permitted. I mean, I would have to think there had to be a variance based on locate. It's in front of the fence.
Well, it seems like it would be required, yeah.
Right. It's in front of the fence and very close to the house.
I just don't want to speak on something I'm not super sure that I didn't do any research on.
No problem.
But if we wanted to add it, I mean, do you know the dimensions of it or anything?
I don't know.
I'm sorry?
To his advantage to add it to the approval.
Right. It's better to get it taken care of now, have it added to the, you know, make sure we add it to the resolution and to the approval. Would you agree?
Do you know approximately how big the shed is? 10 feet, 12 feet by?
I'm not sure, but it doesn't look too big to me, but that's all relative.
Approximately, what's...
Eight feet? I really, I...
Okay. And about, and about how high? I did not see the shed.
It's to the, so if you're looking at the house in Scarborough, opposite of the Hastings, it's, I mean, literally almost up against the house? I'm going to guess eight by 10, but I'm not good with stuff like that, so you probably don't want to take, I'm not the engineer. How's that?
It would make sense that that's what it is, but I really don't know. It's not, it's not a tremendously huge one, but it would make sense that that's what it is.
I didn't drive down Scarborough.
Oh, gotcha.
I went on Hastings because that's where the front lot is. So I didn't notice that part. I'm assuming that it's not higher than about 10 feet either?
No.
Slower than 10 feet, that's for sure.
I don't think it's 10 feet.
So it seems to be a very standard, typical shed.
Right, I just want to make sure it's included.
It's a rubber-made, it's a rubber-made, plastic shed.
And it's probably like six feet.
Wouldn't it be better before you write the resolution to have him just measure it out and call the zoning officer?
Right.
Could, could we do that for like resolution compliance?
Right, yes, as part of resolution compliance. Any other questions? So, Mr., oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Sipriani?
No, go ahead.
I was just going to ask if they had any additional comments before I went to the public. So if you have comments for me, please. All right. Mr. Cohen, hold on one moment for me. I'm going to open this to the public. Anyone wishing to come forward at this time with questions or comments about this application? Seeing no one come forward, I'm going to go ahead and close public session.
Ms. Sipriani? Hey, so the conditions that we're discussing, if someone were to make a motion for approval is that the, would be allowing, because it's a corner lot and both frontages are considered front lots, that there would be a variance allowing a six-foot-high solid white fence that would be extended from the front corner of the house and be situated at least six feet from the Hastings right-of-way. Also, there would be condition that the swing set could be no closer than six feet from the Hastings right-of-way. And that the shed, looking in the front yard from Scarborough, would be permitted. It should be no higher than 10 feet tall and the dimensions will be provided as part of resolution compliance by the applicant.
Just, can I just ask one thing? The six feet you mean is from, is from the fence?
From the right-of-way.
So from the sidewalk?
Yes.
Again, it's...
Yes.
And I was, I'm sorry, I don't, the verbiage, yeah, okay. Thank you.
From the, from the property line, yeah.
Any comments, questions?
I'll just say that I did notice when I went there, on the other corner of Hastings, the neighbor next to this has a, looks like a black iron fence that does go up to the front of the house as well. And it also goes closer to the property line. That's all.
Yeah, we modeled it off that because they're, they're a next-door neighbor. They're also, they went up to six feet. I think they came for a variance here as well for it.
Questions, comments? I, like I said, I went to the property. I have no problem with extending the fence to the front of the house. Extending the fence out, but no closer than six feet to the property line. Also, address the issue of the deck, no higher than 10 feet, make sure it was permitted and the variance granted. And that the swing set has to be within the fence, no closer than six feet from Hastings.
Correct. And when you said deck, did you mean the shed?
Shed. Wrong application. So I would make a motion with those conditions as better spelled out by Ms. Sipriani. I would make a motion to approve the application.
So I would second it. I believe that you're stipulating, you're putting in the, the shed with...
Oh, yeah, I said deck instead of shed.
Right, so that they would need to provide the dimensions.
Correct, yes.
With for resolution compliance.
Correct.
I would second that.
All right. Mr. Martin, do you have anything?
No, no, I'm good. I'm ready to vote.
All right, roll call, please.
Mr. Hyman?
Yes.
Mr. Martins?
Yes.
Ms. Rosal?
Yes.
Mr. Trimmer?
Yes.
Ms. Cusano?
Yes.
Dr. Hoffstein?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
There you have it.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you.
I think it's a record. Does anybody want to go to the bathroom before we start? All right. Mr. Alfieri, we're going to start at 8 o'clock. You can give us a three-minute break because we know this is going to be a little longer, okay? All right. Here's your note.
The hotel, yeah, so the owner of the property is going to remain.
The owner will be taking care of everything outside the hotel.
And there'll be cross-access parking easements, et cetera. So the site will still function as a whole, but this component at least could be developed independent of the other issues that we're going to face.
So the question on the initial request for bifurcation, if we get into any specifics regarding the hotel, is whether the board feels that it can be bifurcated in a way where the hotel application could be considered without being so intertwined with the other aspects because Mr. Alfieri has put in the record that the hotel itself has been approved, but this is a relocation of the hotel, and I'm sure that he would provide more on that, and whether it would be economical and efficient to consider the hotel section or application separately from the residential in order, honestly, it sounds like the testimony or the representation, not the testimony, to expedite the ability to construct the hotel if the board approves that application. So right now, the only question before the board is on bifurcation and whether the board is willing to consider just the hotel relocation site plan section separately.
Just one question, yeah, on the bifurcation. So let's say worst-case scenario, the rest of the phases, the residential section, worst-case scenario, you don't get approved for that. The hotel will go up anyway? Yes, in fact, that's why we're doing this first, requesting that be done first, because they want to get in the ground by the spring. And the hotel was always like the center of this project because of Great Adventure and everything else, and the families that come to the fields and play the sports in the back, they need a hotel, and we finally have Hilton lined up where they're ready to go, but there is corporate paperwork that has to get done before they issue the final license to the developer. Sure. But yes, that's being developed independent of the residential. Independent, and Hilton would still want to be there whether you had residential or not, whether all the other stuff was done or not. They'd still want that. That's correct. Okay, thank you.
So once the hotel is approved to be constructed, then it can be constructed even if the rest of the application is denied?
Correct. That would be the purpose of the bifurcation.
Yes.
Mr. Peters, did you want to say something?
Just an analogy for the board. This project has a general development plan, and Mr. Alfieri explained to you what they're trying to accomplish. So I'm not testifying for the applicant. I happen to know the history of this project as one of the board's professionals for both the planning and zoning board. So all of the applications for this project, I've had some responsibility for in terms of the review. General development plans that we're going to put this in Section A, and this in Section B, and this in Section C. At some point in time, when someone builds a project this big, not all of those tenants are lined up. So if they had six pad sites, they didn't have six 7-Elevens, or Chick-fil-A's, or Starbucks lined up. There's an old phrase in land development, it's what the market will bear. At some point in time, if someone wants to build something, they'll go to the owner of the property and say, hey, we'd like to build the hotel there now. But you know what? Any chance you can move it from here to there? It's not uncommon in projects of this size to see this. And the only analogy I can give you, and some of you may not respectfully be old enough to remember, is the Frehold Raceway Mall. So when you're driving south on the Frehold Raceway Mall, and you go in the entrance where there used to be a Toys R' Us on the left, that whole right-hand side over there is still vacant. There's supposed to be a hotel there. An approval in 1989. So how many years later, and they still haven't built the hotel at the Frehold Raceway Mall? Because the market wouldn't bear it. No one came and said, let's go build a hotel over there. So in this particular instance, a user for the site, whether it was recreational user, an office user, a retail user, in this case, a hotel or warehouse, the hotel came in and said, we'd like to use it, but your approved plans has it on the opposite side of that second traffic light off of 537, and they want to put it in a different location. Absolutely not unheard of. I think Gene's done a real good job of making sure that the board's covered. We're going to hear if the board agrees to bifurcate it. We're going to hear, I believe it's Phase 1D, the hotel only, which means you're not obligated, anything you do tonight does not obligate you to Sections C, E, and F, which we still have some things to discuss, or debate, or decide. So the application simply is, the plans at one point had a hotel someplace else, the application that's before you always revised the plans to have the hotel up on 537, and now they're simply asking to deal with just the hotel portion of the application, which is in the same spot it was when they made the application in December of last year. So from our perspective, we take no exception to the request for bifurcation, but again, to the extent you want to feel comfortable or need some more guarantees about what could happen, what could not happen, and you want to make sure you have those protections, by all means, feel free to ask Gene or myself, or Mr. Alfieri.
And Mr. Alfieri, I just wanted to confirm what Mr. Peters just said, is that this is looking for the bifurcation only of Phase D being the hotel of Phase 1? I'm sorry, yes.
1D.
Because, and I'm just, you had sent me an email originally that also talked about Phases C and F.
But they're not, they're not ready to be considered separately, so we're focused only on the hotel. And I wasn't sure of the letter, it's D. Ian confirmed D.
And just because I had the email, and so that if there were to be a motion by the board, it would be allowing bifurcation of the venture crossing Phase 1, so as to allow consideration of Phase D alone?
Correct.
Okay.
Two things I was going to miss. I did not put on the record that Mr. Romar is recused from his application, so he's already gone this evening. The other thing is, thank you, Mr. Peters, thank you, Ms. Cipriani. To help make it clear, I know we have a lot of new people, and a good portion of the board is new, and this has been going on a long time. So just to be clear, we're only hearing about the bifurcation for the hotel alone, right? But to be clear on what's in each next step, and this is only that, we're not approving or discussing anything else.
That's correct. We'd like to, assuming we finish this, we'd like to move into the next phase, but we'll see how long this takes.
And my understanding...
That's so promising.
My understanding is that if they allow the bifurcation as part of the presentation on the Phase D, that Mr. Alfieri had indicated that there was going to be some history of the project provided for the benefit of the new board members?
Yeah, so there are two levels of the history. One would be when Mr. Borden comes up, if you allow the bifurcation, he'll just show you where it was originally approved, the hotel, and give you an overall view of how Phase 1 is currently approved. And then if we get past that and we start the density argument, there's a more elaborate history of the whole zoning history, but hopefully, we're all awake when we get to that one.
So from my perspective, after listening to everyone involved, Mr. Peters and Ms. Cipriani, I don't have a problem with the bifurcation. I just want to be sure that everyone here is clear that we're only discussing the bifurcation regarding the hotel. We're not approving anything else, as we all, well, some of us know, this has been very expensive, so I just want to be clear that we all understand, we're just discussing the hotel. They'll give us more details about where it was or anything, but I don't have an issue with bifurcation. My question, too, is do we have to make a motion for that?
Yes.
Okay. I would make a motion then, if, I'm sorry, if no one else has any questions or comments?
I would just make comments.
Yes.
My understanding is that it's up to the liberty of the board to make that decision to bifurcate it, while I understand that it would, in my opinion, hearing from the professionals, it would make sense. I would respectfully request from the applicant that they be mindful of our consideration, and when it's the other way around, when we have a question about another part of the application, saying, no, no, not that we're just looking at this right now, and you can't look at that. We're doing what you want because, at the graciousness of this board, to bifurcate it, we're not required to. So if we could just have that reciprocation, that, you know, just because you're not required to testify to something which is related, but it's a different part of the phase, I would appreciate it, that's all.
It's hard for me to say yes or no, because...
That was a statement.
But I heard you.
Thank you.
I just want to ask, do we need to open it up to the public? Oh, do we need to open it up to the public, or?
On the motion to bifurcate?
No, okay.
No.
So if no one has anything else to say, I would second the motion.
Well, the motion was that we were in agreement to bifurcate the application and discuss the hotel.
Phase D.
Phase D.
Only.
Phase 1D.
Yes. All right, and for that, we...
I'm sorry? We have a motion, and a second roll call, please?
Mr. Hyman?
Yes.
Mr. Martins?
Yes.
Ms. Rosal?
Yes.
Mr. Tremer?
Yes.
Ms. Cusano?
Yes.
Dr. Hofstein?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Thank you. So we're going to now call Mr. Borden up, and, Mr. Borden, we're going to need to have you sworn in and qualified.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you'll give before this board will be the truth and nothing but the truth? And could you please state your name and your actions for the record?
Yes, good evening. Ian Borden, President of Professional Design Services, Lakewood, New Jersey, professional plan licensed in the state of New Jersey, with PDS for 30 years, and been doing this for 40 years. Thank you.
So, Mr. Borden, you've heard the discussion we have with the board, and we do have an exhibit up on the screen...
Yes.
...that I'd like you to identify, so we can orient the board as to what, this is the prior approved plan?
That's correct.
All right.
We have two exhibits for this proposal, and thank you to the board for allowing this. Basically, it's very simple. What we have on the screen now is what is the approved site plan for Phase D, and I'll explain some background here. What we're looking at is Phase D. This is Sheet 5 of 52 of the original, or the currently approved Phase 1 plan, it was approved by this board in 2021. And what you see here is Phase 2. You have Monmouth Road along the top, and you have the ramp to 195 East that runs along the eastern part of the property. North is to the top right. To place you on the site, on the left here, this is the traffic light with Pine Drive. So the opposite side of this drive is what we call Phase A, which is fully constructed with the 7-Eleven, Taco Bell, the Popeyes, and the Starbucks, et cetera. So that's Phase A. That's an island created by the jug handle that runs behind. Behind that, to the bottom left off the screen, you have the air dome. That's considered Phase C. I skipped over Phase B. Phase B was, is the athletic fields in the back. So Phase A, pads, B, fields, and C, the air dome, are all constructed. What you have on the bottom, and Phase D is this island here, there's the continuation of the jug handle drive, which is this road here, which on the bottom running left to right, which provides access to Phase 2, which is the warehouses off to the right here. That's also constructed.
And, Mr. Borden, can we just identify what this exhibit is, and so we can mark it?
Yeah. It's marked on this exhibit as approved Phase D. It's Sheet 5 of 52 of the 2021 approved site plans. You actually see in the top right corner the little inset of the map. I know it's small, but you have Phase A here, Phase B in the back, the big square is the air dome in Phase C, and here, we're talking about Phase D. So Phase D is formed by Monmouth Road to the top or northwest, to the east or northeast is the end of the property at the right away with 195, the Pine Drive extension to the south, and then to the, or to the west, and then to the south is an access road. So we're dealing with this island of property. And what we have on the approved plan is, the property is, or Phase D is currently approved for two fast-food pad buildings and a restaurant, a two-story restaurant with office above it. Located directly across the access drive, not shown on this map, I didn't, I wanted to include the approved plan as the exhibit, because we're doing apples and apples of what's approved today versus what we're seeking to get approved tonight on our amended Phase D. But the Hilton Hotel on the current approval for Phase 1 is located right on the bottom here. So if you look at the inset map in the top right, it's just below Phase D. It's, these cutoff driveways here are actually for the hotel. So as Mr. Alfieri correctly described, Hilton is finally, we've been talking to Hilton since we started this job, and I started this job in 2016, we've been talking to Hilton, and they've been, in my world, I'm not sure it's right and illegal, but under contract, but they've not constructed with the high interest rates and business environment, but now they're ready to go. But they have asked for us to place the hotel in the island that is Phase D, so it's closer to Monmouth Road. And that brings us to the proposal, what we're seeking, which is, if you don't mind, Anthony, the next sheet. I guess for purposes of this bifurcated application, this would be A1 and A2.
What does A2 depict?
A2 is the proposed site plan that we had submitted to the board 10 days ago. It's consistent, it's basically the same proposal. The application we made for the overall amended approval in November of 2024 included the same, it's the same plan. Again, we're just bifurcating out this single phase for purpose of this bifurcate, or this hearing. So here we have, again, the same orientation. You have Pine Drive on the left and the access drive on the bottom, and you can envision that we've removed the three pad buildings and replaced it with the hotel. The hotel is approved at 134 rooms with a 9,900-square-foot banquet facility, as well as a 2,400, 2,500-square-foot bar and restaurant inside the hotel. The, in addition to shifting the hotel, Hilton has asked us to increase the rooms from 134 to 180 and eliminate the banquet. I think that's done in consideration of the market, which is families using the sports fields especially. I keep hearing from my client, and frankly, others, that when they have tournaments and whatnot at the fields, that people are filling up the hotels in Frehold. And I, as a Jackson resident, I'd love them to fill a hotel in Jackson.
Mr. Borden, just a quick question. So they're want, they're going to remove the 9,000-square-foot banquet, increase the number of rooms. What about the restaurant?
The restaurant stays. I'm sorry, I don't think I said that. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand. The restaurants are being eliminated, 3 billion...
The restaurant stays.
The restaurant stays, the banquet, the 9,000-square-foot banquet facility is being removed.
So the restaurant is part of the hotel?
It's inside the hotel. It's one of those hotels with a restaurant inside. It's just inside the footprint.
How many rooms? I just missed it.
I'm sorry.
How many rooms?
180.
180. So the access, there's no separate driveway on Route 537, correct?
Correct. So the access, again, the access and parking remains all the same. There is no access to Monmouth Road, nor, of course, the highway ramp, and nor to Pine Drive. The only access is to the access drive to the bottom.
And that's how the other hotel was going to access, just on the opposite side?
Correct. It was going to access the same driveways, we're just flipping them over and placing the hotel closer to Monmouth Road.
There were, there was a CME report that was issued last week, and there were a bunch of suggestions about striping and directional signage, et cetera. You have no issue with complying with all of those, or working with the professionals to address those comments, correct?
Not at all. We fully agree to work with him. We agree with all the comments, and we accept those. I'd like to go back over a couple of the site plan details, just so the record is clear, and we do require a D6 height variance for this hotel, so I want to make sure we discuss that. But just to stay on the site plan for a moment, the project requires, for the rooms and the bar, requires 205 parking spaces.
I'm sorry, could you say it again? I just couldn't hear.
The hotel, the hotel and the restaurant require 205 parking spaces. We are providing 286 physical spaces, so we have more than ample parking. We are required to have 5% of the total parking EV-ready, which is 14, so that, and we get a 2:1 credit for those EV-ready spaces. So we have a total parking credit for Phase D of 300 spaces. From a site plan component, the, as you see in Exhibit A1, or the approved plan, that it's already approved, the outside curb line remains the same, so the intensity of development does not increase, there is no increase in impervious coverage as part of this proposed modification. As a result, there is no required modification to the on-site stormwater management system. The site has a master quote-unquote stormwater management system with four stormwater basins in the side and back of the project. They remain unchanged, because we're not increasing any impervious cover or disturbance, so...
I'm sorry, you said the stormwater system remains unchanged?
Yes, the management, the management system. There will be inlets constructed to tie in to the existing drainage system, but the management system containing these four stormwater basins are not impacted, and they're already constructed. All of those are constructed.
You also mentioned the height variance, but that was in the previous request as well, correct?
Correct, correct.
And the height remains unchanged, is the same variance?
We're getting there. D variances, D6 variances. Because under the, under the HCMU zone, hotels are conditional uses, so there are conditional use requirements that I want to briefly go over, just so the record is clear. We have minimum yard and area requirements. These are found in 244-57.2C, which is part of the highway commercial zone.
Mr. Borden, I can't understand anything you're saying.
Am I not talking, am I holding the microphone wrong?
Yes.
Okay. Can tell I've never been a rock singer. Sorry. I'm used to being too loud. So let me go back over that. So the hotels are conditional uses in the HC zone, which is the underlying zone for this project. It's the HCMU, Highway Commercial Mixed Use, which permits all uses in the highway commercial. So under 244-57.2, a hotel is a conditional use with a couple of conditions. There's basically two, A and B. A is minimum yard and area requirements. The minimum lot area shall be 2 acres, and we obviously exceed 2, we exceed 2 acres. The minimum lot width is 200 feet. We exceed that. Frontage is 200 feet, and the depth is 200 feet. So we exceed 200 feet in lot width, frontage and depth. The maximum building coverage is the same as permitted for the particular zone. We do not exceed the building coverage for the project in the highway commercial, in the highway commercial mixed-use zone. And the front, rear, and side yard setbacks, actually, I think this is where I, we're going to talk about the variance. So required minimum front yard setbacks will be the same as required in the case of the, and we meet the side setbacks, and the front setback is 60 feet. The building is set 133 feet back from Monmouth Road. The minimum front setback is 60 feet. However, in this zone, you're permitted to, and the maximum building height is 35 feet. However, you're allowed to exceed the building height of 35 feet. For 10, for every 10 feet of enhanced setback, you're allowed to add 1 foot of extra building height. So, for example, as I said, the minimum front setback is 60 feet. If I place a building at 70 feet, I'm allowed to be 36 feet. 80 feet, 37, 90, 38, and so on. To a maximum height in this HCMU zone of 90 feet. In our case, however, though, with that front setback of 133 feet, we're not permitted, our proposed building height is 56 feet. That's what the approved, it's a five-story, I should have left that out. The building, the hotel is approved and proposed as five stories. So that's a building height of 56 feet, measured to the flat roof as the ordinance requires. So in order to have a 56-foot-high building under that zone criteria, it has to be placed 210 feet from the road, and we're proposing 133. So as a result, we have a building, a D6 height variance, a D6 height requirement, or height variance. The permitted height at the location that we're proposing at 133 feet is 42 feet. So our variance, the delta in our variance is 56 feet, where 42 feet is permitted.
Now, that 56 is the same height as the approved hotel, but it's closer to the road now?
That is absolutely correct. I'm sorry, I said D6, I meant D3.
Right.
D3 conditional use variance for the, because it's conditional use, so it's conditional use variance. In order to address the height criteria, the, it's necessary to have plenty of testimony that the height restriction does not offend any purposes of the height restriction, and would nonetheless be, you know, under case law, would nonetheless be consistent with the surrounding neighborhood. In my opinion, the positive criteria is met, because the enhanced setback of the structures is consistent in the zone. We have the air dome that's located directly, catty corner across the Pine Drive extension, which is, which has a total height to the top of the dome of 90 feet. So, my opinion, we don't, we qualify for that variance. And there is one other site plan-related variance issue, and that is, we have a, there is a required front parking setback along Monmouth Road of 20 feet, and this is consistent with the plans, again, as previously approved. We did not change this. But at the very front corner by Pine Drive, we have eight parking spaces. Because the road is at an angle to the property, you see how the parking is square to the hotel, but angles to the front line of Monmouth Road, so at the front-left corner, or the southwestern corner, we have a setback proposed at that point of 13 feet, where 20 feet is required. That, so we are asking for a C2 front setback parking variance for eight parking spaces. The maximum deviation is 13 feet, and over the course of those eight spaces, it tapers to the conforming 20 feet. My opinion, again, the C2, of course, is the benefits versus detriment variance, C variance, and my opinion, the variation that we're asking for for this minor deviation will not impair the intent and purpose of the master plan, nor create a substantial detriment to the public good.
Is there any landscaping, or what's between those spaces and the road?
Yes, we have landscaping. We don't have the exhibit for that, but as for all parking, we have an evergreen hedge. We always plant along the edge of the, of any parking lot to screen the headlights from the road. So those, there is landscaping between, in that setback between the parking and the road.
Anything else?
I don't believe there is anything else, no.
No curb or sidewalk on that side, correct? So you're going to have the hedge?
Yes.
So the parking space and hedge, there's sidewalk there?
There's no sidewalk along Monmouth Road. That waiver was granted with the original approvals. All the pedestrian access, being this is a large project with internal circulation, all of the pedestrian access is circulated internally between this site, the fast foods and the 7-Eleven across the street, the air dome, the fields. Obviously, the intent is, the hotels would be for, a primary use of the hotels would be for the families utilizing the fields in the back, so there's a, that was actually one of the comments from the... one of the comments from the traffic review, was to, he noticed a few spots where we could improve that pedestrian connectivity. We, we've worked hard on that over the years of this project, and we continue, and we appreciate the comments, and continue to try to improve that.
Anything else, Mr. Gordon?
Uh, no.
Mr. Peters, anything for us?
We have a report dated February twenty-seventh of this year, and while it references all four phases of the project, I think there needs to be testimony regarding compliance with it. And I think there are some items in there that need to be discussed at some length with the board. There are conditional use standards that are referenced, that require, for the purposes of making a record, either testimony or consent. There are technical comments with regards to drainage, landscaping. I have a report, and Mr. Gordon and I have done this dance more than once. If we ask for testimony, I expect it at the meeting, not at resolution compliance. So if, if we say that we provided landscape, let's talk about the landscaping, because we have a comment says landscaping looks a little thin. So let's talk about, as part of resolution compliance, we'll work with Hilton, we'll do something with regards to the landscaping, otherwise tell us if there's a tree every fifty feet on the site, and that's it. But I need to be able, when we're done with this project, in order to accomplish resolution compliance, have a guide of what has been agreed to. And so generally, I like to use our report. If there's a, if Mr. Alfieri suggests a different method through the resolution, that's okay too. But we really didn't talk much about the report as it relates to the application this evening for Phase One D, the hotel only.
Mr. Alfieri, Mr. Gordon?
Yes. To start, we certainly agree to comply with any of the technical comments in the review of March that apply to One D. We certainly would make that part of the record. We have no objection with any of the comments. I believe I was, it was, one of the requests was to describe the landscaping in more detail. And we do propose street trees along, I don't, I didn't bring an exhibit, the plan, there was a landscape plan submitted as part of the set to the board, which is Sheet Eight of fourteen. And we propose street trees at a fifty-foot spacing along Monmouth Road, Pine Drive Extension, and all along the internal access, as well as scattered throughout the site. We have the height, the, the shrub hedge that I had mentioned along the parking facing Monmouth Road, Pine Drive Extension, as well as the rear access drive. And island parking as well with the street trees and, or shade trees, I should say, and shrub species.
Since we're, we're looking at the report, so any landscape-specific comments relating to One D you would agree to address as a condition of approval?
Yes.
How about this, the lighting that's located within the parking lot?
Yes, the lighting will comply and will comply with the, with the ordinance. Again, the lighting is already approved, we're not seeking to change it, but it certainly will comply with the ordinance and any technical comments proffered in the March review.
And what about refuse and recycling? How are they handled?
We have refuse at the rear of the hotel. You see there's a service drive off the rear access drive, so it's actually at the rear of the hotel facing away from Monmouth Road, not visible from Monmouth Road or Pine Drive. And we would landscape screen that as well in accordance with the ordinance.
And there was also a comment in both reports about loading zone, and how loading would take place and where?
Yes, currently, we do not provide a loading zone, but we have ample space behind the hotel to widen the curb and provide a loading zone behind the, behind the hotel.
Are you planning any signage on the hotel?
Signage?
Yes.
We, we have, there is no specific, we are proposing, currently, the approval has three ground signs along Monmouth Road. The master approval for the project has one ground sign for each pad in the front, as well as you have that large animated sign that's located on the opposite side of Pine Drive along Monmouth Road. So the, the large animated sign would be the primary sign for this pad, as well as any others. So there is no separate freestanding sign for this, this building, but there is a ground sign out front that's already approved.
What about on the hotel itself?
The hotel itself will, of course, have signage on the hotel. That signage would have to comply with the facade signage requirements in the ordinance.
I'm sorry? Do we have any fire department approval on this?
Honestly, we had submitted, we, I believe we do, we had submitted the November submittal to District Two. He did, did issue a review, a conditional approval, and we would follow that. It's also one of the comments in the CME review. He wanted us to, to fine-tune our fire truck access around the building. So that's one of the items that we agreed to as well with addressing his review.
We don't have a copy of that?
It's a letter dated December sixteenth, twenty-twenty-four, from Scott Roush, and...
If you don't mind. This is for this location.
Right, so Ian, just to be clear, that even though we're discussing this tonight, and we made this request to bifurcate, this plan was submitted as part of the most recent application, is that correct? So that's why this report's from December and not today?
Yeah, and this report is for the entire Phase One. So it's not, certainly, certainly we would submit this separately and get a separate approval from the Borough Fire Prevention.
So it's not specific just to this building, though?
Correct, no, it's...
So you still have to, you still have to do that?
We will do that, yes.
Because, I mean, it's, I don't see fire department connection, I don't see hydrants or anything like that.
Well, that, you'll see a comment on the second, but, but that, that, we have a utility plan in the set. Again, this is only the site plan exhibit.
The building itself, you said, is fifty-six feet to the roof?
To the flat roof.
The flat roof. How high of a power pit you're going to put on it?
I, I don't recall. I assume four or five feet, but I, I don't recall. Obviously, the power pits are to hide the mechanical...
So minimum with the top of the power pit, sixty feet?
I would say that's fair, yes.
And where's your, where are you proposing EV parking?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that. Where do you propose what?
The EV.
Thank you.
It's one of my pets.
We, we proposed it in two locations, actually, it's right here, here against Pine Drive, and here at the rear, along the rear access.
That'd be good, yeah.
Yeah, not near...
Away from the building, but it gives easy access for a fire truck to get to it, too, because it's a nightmare.
Yes.
Very good.
Yeah, they're on the main circulation, circular drive around the building.
All right, so you're just waiting on Mr. Roush to get back to you on this specific building for his recommendations?
Correct.
And you will follow whatever he says?
Of course.
Yeah, because this is mostly that phase.
Yes. You see, it mentions the air dome.
Yeah, well, it's more, he's more focused on the dome and general stuff, so...
Yes.
But as long as you agree to...
We, absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Peters, did we, did you have something else we needed to cover on your report?
Record's clear enough for a resolution, so I appreciate the additional testimony. If there are other comments or questions as it relates to either drainage or traffic, if there are going to be other witnesses, we can speak to those as well, but I think they generalized their consent to the comments that relate to Phase One D only, the hotel, in our February twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-five report. Thank you.
Thank you.
And we do have Mr. Ray here, if the board needed to hear traffic testimony. I think even in the CME traffic review, they indicate that the generation and distribution can be handled as part of the bigger project, because the hotel was already contemplated. But if you want to hear traffic testimony, he's here and ready to go.
Mr. Martin?
Just, just one quick question. The additional rooms, instead of the conference room that was proposed, will that have any kind of impact on the traffic report?
We'll have to have Mr. Ray come up and answer that one.
I can tell you, it significantly reduces the amount of parking we require.
Right, because there's no parties and weddings or anything anymore in the banquet. Right, it's just rooms. But he can, he'll respond to the traffic.
So I was actually going to ask the same thing. How exactly was that going to affect the scope of the project? Not specifically for traffic, but as a general for this building? Meaning, obviously, there's going to be a different type of usage for the, a larger section of the building, if you're eliminating that banquet hall. As far as the restaurant goes, is that a restaurant open to the public, or is it primarily for the residents that are going to be staying there?
It's open to the public.
Okay, so that, I guess, would have to be taken into consideration as well, you know, bringing in more traffic, obviously, if the, for the residents.
Again, the restaurant's already approved in the current, is already included in the current approved hotel. And when we calculate the parking, we, we calculate the parking for the restaurant as a separate use from the hotel. So, so the parking calculation assumes that nobody in the hotel is, or nobody in the restaurant, I'm sorry, is, is staying at the hotel. It double counts it, if you will, or at least is conservative.
So the, the main change would be from the banquet hall to the additional rooms?
Additional rooms, correct.
How would that affect the scope of the project? I mean, I guess it would, you know, affect the water and sewer usage as well. So it probably should...
Well, that's, that would be Jackson MUA approval.
Correct, I'm saying that would, they should be notified as well.
Yes, so there are an outside agency approval required.
And we also have to, although we've received Monmouth County Planning Board approval, we have to get an amended approval for this component, because it's obviously different than what they originally approved.
Right. Again, they've all approved the hotel, but not in this location, and not with that slight modification.
And I say Monmouth County Planning Board, because they have jurisdiction over the road, but both counties review the plan, both Monmouth and Ocean.
Just one more thing to clarify. Dr. Hofstein asked before about signage on the building, and you said you'll comply. Well, what does that mean? What are you, I just want to know for the record, what are you putting onto this building?
Well, we don't have a final answer on that, because we have to get the approval to get them to sign the contract to tell us what they're going to put on the building. But what I've represented is that the signage will comply with the ordinance. The ordinance limits the area of a facade sign compared to the overall size of the building, so we will comply with that. And, and if it does happen to exceed that, which I don't anticipate, that would require a separate variance application, just for a facade signage. But we don't have that, we don't have that variance for the current approval, we didn't ask for it, we don't believe we need it, and I don't believe we need it here.
Okay, so my question really is also, you have a, the main thing is the hotel, is there, is it going to be considered multiple occupants, tenants, if you want it, and therefore, you'll be allowed to have multiple signs on the building, or is it going to be one sign?
One sign. It's one, it's one sign.
Okay. So the restaurant's not having an additional side, sign outside?
I mean, I wouldn't say it's a separate sign, but I guess it's possible. I've seen hotels where they'll say Hilton Hotel, and then, you know, Ian's Bar, in small lettering underneath of it, you know?
That's what they're going with?
Well, that's what I'd like to do. I think I'd rather do that than what I'm doing today, but...
I was just asking for, you know, for zoning purposes, for later compliance. All right.
That, that just brings something. So currently, you don't have any requirements or mandates from Hilton as far as the signage, right? No, we definitely want this size, blah, 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 we want to be able to advertise. Nothing like that? No mandates from them?
I have to deliver this approval to them, so they can then get into those details with me.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Mr. Brianna, did you have something?
Yeah, I'm just, sorry, I'm just, in order to prepare, I'm kind of going through what the variance requests were. My head, and I know that you had provided some testimony, but I'm not, I want to make sure I got all of it. So obviously, there's the height variance, where you're going to provide one hundred and thirty-three instead of two hundred and ten feet.
Right, a front setback, yes.
And...
Then the parking space setback of the eight spaces, closest point was what, thirteen?
Thirteen feet, where twenty feet is required.
And then it tailors to meet...
I'm sorry, could you say that again?
Thirteen feet is the closest point, but then it tailors so that by the eighth space, it's at the twenty feet for the balance of the parkings.
Okay, yeah, I'm sorry, I wasn't sure if you were saying else. So those are the only two variances?
Correct.
Could you just justify, sorry here, could you justify the, that variance, the last one for the eight feet, for those eight spots? Meaning, if you're overparked, why do you want that variance?
It's a good question. We are overparked, but we just wanted to complete the row of parking. You know, the front row of parking is parallel with the front line of the building. We just wanted to complete that row. Could I eliminate eight parking spaces? I could.
I'm not asking one way or another.
No, I understand.
I'm just trying to, if you want to justify it, go ahead, that's all.
No, just trying to maintain conformity of the front parking. You know, it's how it's conformed to the building, it's square. We have, basically, from looking at the Exhibit A two, from the point that my marker's on, from this point to the right, all these spaces are conforming, and we're just speaking about these eight right here. And, and the answer is, could they be eliminated to eliminate that variance? Yes.
Mr. Peters, do you have any input on that specific, those eight parking spots? Would you think they would be recommended to rather put landscaping there?
I, I never have any issue with people providing too many parking spaces.
Even when it requires variance? Thank you.
The, the alternative is worse. If they need it, people park where they shouldn't. So to the extent, if the board, if board members have driven out of the site, it's really, it's a two-lane exit, and the existing road that's out there now, if you think that twenty feet in, in that location, and understand that the road isn't in the right-of-way, so twenty feet in from the right-of-way, whether they're twenty or thirteen feet, doesn't have anything to do with the site distance in that area, as you're trying to merge onto five thirty-seven east. So from a safety perspective, I take no exception. If, for some reason, the board had an inkling about landscaping, and understand, this isn't a residential use, we're trying to screen it from someone, this is a business use, we want to see it. I can't take any exception to the request for the reduction in the setback, because I don't think it has a tangible effect on the site's safety.
And so, again, so if the applicant wants to see that that's, you know, justification, no problem, I was just asking for it. But I mean, I very much understand your...
Well, Mr. Gordon was responsible for the justification.
Correct, I, you're giving it to him, so...
I don't take any exception to his testimony as it related to the request for relief. I think that having extra parking spaces on something that we don't see every day is always a good idea. Listen, at the end of the day, we thought we had enough parking spaces down at the, at the ballfields, and then different types of uses, different scheduling, and all of a sudden, there was, there was almost a problem with parking in that location. It's good if something's used enough that the parking lot is full. It's better if we stick a few extra parking spaces in it, just in case it's successful. So if you're asking me from a professional engineering or planning perspective, I take no exception to the request for the relief from twenty to thirteen feet, so we can get eight more parking spaces.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
We're, we're going to bring Mr. Ray up, too. We're going to bring Mr. Ray up for traffic to respond to the one question and the traffic report as well.
We'll wait until after Mr. Ray goes, then. All right.
Is that okay? John?
Well, you should open it to public to see if there are any, if anybody has any questions for Mr. Borden unless he's coming back.
He's, he'll be here, so. You want to do them all at once, we can. Questions? It's up to you.
I would say, ask if there are any questions of Mr. Borden's testimony that he gave right now, let's hear them.
Okay. I'm going to open this, Mr. Ray, we're going to open it to the public first. If anybody wishes to come forward and comment on the testimony for Mr. Borden. Seeing no one come forward, I'm going to go ahead and close that. Mr. Ray?
Mr. Sipriani? Yes. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you'll give before this board will be the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And could you state your name and credentials for the record?
John Ray, R-E-A, a professional engineer with McDonough and Ray Associates Traffic Engineers.
Mr. Ray's qualifications have been accepted previously, Madam Chair, I assume it's okay? His qualifications?
Yes.
Yeah, he's been before this board.
Yes, thank you.
I think that's fine.
And Mr. Ray, you prepared a traffic report, multiple traffic reports, but specifically a traffic report for this latest version of Phase 1 of the project, which includes the hotel and many other uses.
Correct.
So why don't you just generally describe how the traffic flows and how site circulation would work?
Well, just dealing with what's in front of the board this evening for the Hilton Hotel. The number of rooms, Hilton has asked for an increase in the number of rooms from what was originally approved, 134, to 180. So it's a 46-room increase in the number of rooms that they want. However, that will be offset by the elimination of the banquet facility, and I think that was the question. The banquet facility is going to be, was going to be 9,000 square feet. And I'm not an architect, and I thought we had our architect here, but I know a 9,000-square-foot banquet facility could hold several hundred seats. So I think the increase in the number of rooms will be more than offset, traffic-wise, by the elimination of a banquet room that would hold several hundred people. So I think, overall, it would be a positive with respect to traffic.
And the parking requirement goes down as a result of this change?
And the parking requirement goes down, yes.
And then as far as site circulation, can you just briefly describe?
Well, we have full circulation around the building. The parking, I believe, is well distributed on all four sides of the building. And just to reiterate what Mr. Peters said with respect to the eight parking spaces that need a setback variance, I would also render an opinion that we'd rather have those parking spaces. They're up toward the front of the building, they're prime parking spaces, they will be used by patrons, and they will have no impact on safety. They're outside the site triangle. I don't think anybody would really know that they're 13 or 20 feet from the right-of-way line. We'd rather have the parking spaces. They're prime parking spaces, and they basically complete that front row of parking up along Monmouth Road.
And then, in terms of the professional reports, I know you've reviewed both the CME report dated August 26 and then Mr. Peters' report from, from, I believe, February. Are there any traffic-related or site circulation issues that you feel we can address to satisfy their comments?
No, as Mr. Borden indicated, we can comply with Mr. Mazur's report with respect to, basically, it comes down to pedestrian connectivity and making sure that they are safe, well documented, or, you know, well-signed, well crosswalks, all of the sidewalks, things of that nature. We will walk, work with Mr. Mazur and make sure that we take care of the safe pedestrian connectivity.
I think that's really all we have of Mr. Ray unless the board members or professionals have questions.
Mr. Mazur?
I had no questions for Mr. Ray. I take no exception to the testimony he gave you this evening. If you'd like, I can run through my report unless the board has questions for Mr. Ray.
Mr. Alfieri, Mr. Ray said you take no exception to Mr. Mazur's report, you agree to everything?
Yes, we do.
Yes.
Okay. There's one, one point I just wanted to clarify on. One of the comments that I had was related to the phasing and the pedestrian connection with the hotel being up here now in Phase 1D. The pedestrian connection to the existing athletic fields and previously built for Phase 2, it feels pretty important. So even though it would be a temporary of nature until some type of development does end up occurring on Phase 1E at a later date, just to have him confirm that the intention would be that we can have a solid pedestrian connection off of what would be the Pine Avenue extension, especially considering the potential for truck traffic when warehouses are occupied as well.
Yeah, and that's fine. I believe the side, the connection's already there, but yes, we will definitely work with your professionals, independent of how it's developed in between here and the fields. There'll be connectivity immediately.
I have no other comments.
That's a great point. Thank you. Any questions or comments regarding traffic? No, no, that was good, okay. Mr. Hyman? Just the markings for loading zones, are they going to be marked fire lanes?
Yes, we're going to mark, we're going to comply with the fire official with fire lanes, and then Mr. Borden did indicate that we're going to add a loading zone on the Route 537 side.
So is that going to be marked loading zone, no parking?
Yes, it'll be striped for loading, yes.
And is there no parking signs in general throughout?
I'm not sure. No parking signs, like in the aisles, the drive aisles?
We can, we can stripe the aisles for fire zones. Just put, put the letters on the aisles so that nobody parks in the aisles. We have plenty of parking, there's no need for people to park in the aisles, we can do that.
All right, it's more convenient parking out of them.
We'll stripe the aisles for fire zones.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay. I'm going to go ahead and open it to the public. Any questions regarding the traffic testimony you just heard from Mr. Ray? Seeing no one come forward, I'm going to go ahead and close public session. Mr. Alfieri?
That concludes our presentation, Madam Chair. So we'd request that you opened it up to the public for comment. I think the whole public is ours, but just in case.
There's one.
There's one, there's always one.
There's always one. You heard Mr. Alfieri say they have finished their testimony. I'm going to go ahead and open it to the public. Anybody wishing to come forward, comments, questions, issues, please feel free to do so at this time. Seeing no one come forward, I'm going to go ahead and close public session. Mr. Alfieri, would you like to make a closing statement?
Yes, just very briefly. Again, thank you very much for the accommodation, for the bifurcation. I think that the goal for this project from day one was to get a hotel in this area, and if approval of this would get us much closer so that by next year, there'll be a hotel construction begun. And we therefore requested the board grant the approvals as requested, with all the conditions that we've stipulated.
Board, it's up for us, it is up to us for discussion and a potential motion. Questions, comments, issues?
I'd like to make a few comments. First, all the questions we had about landscaping, lighting, parking, rates removal, et cetera, were all answered satisfactorily. The applicant agreed to Mr. Mazur's report and everything, including the circulation, pedestrian safety, truck deliveries, fire vehicle service. The hotel will have a dining area, and all those questions were answered.
I'm sorry, Dr. Hofstein, could you speak directly into the microphone? I'm going to hear you, and I'm...
My problem. Should I repeat everything?
Okay. So basically, all our questions were answered. When it comes to the two variances, the extra parking spots, as Mr. Peter called out, is always a premium, and it's only for eight spots, and it's certainly not going to interfere with running the place or traffic on-site. The height variance should be granted, there's a structure that's 90 feet high right behind it, so this is certainly within the realm of things that should be there. So basically, all the negative criteria that we've heard has been mitigated, and there's no substantial detriment to the public good. And since 2016 or 17, we've been hearing about a hotel, not this spot, we've been hearing about hotels in Jackson since forever. It's great that this could finally be happening to the town, so I would think we should approve it, but let everybody else speak before I make a motion.
Mr. Hyman? I think Dr. Hofstein covered it. I said there's really not much else to say.
And just to clarify...
Very well said.
Clarify what the conditions were. There would be the height variance for 133 feet instead of 200, where 210 would be required.
Well, it's just, that's the distance, but the height is really 42 feet would be provided, allowed, and we're at 56.
Right, okay, yes. Thank you. Thank you. So, yes, for that...
I apologize. I think it's important to note that the, that the relief is D6, height variance relief, and there's subsequent C variance relief.
Correct.
And the site plan approval.
Right. Well, then the other question is, is it D3 because it's a conditional use and we have that?
Yes, as it relates to the hotel.
It's the same thing. It's the same thing.
Right.
Yes, it's from a condition, a conditional use. And then also, the C variance for the parking space, 13 at one place where 20 is required. The statements were made that they were, signage will comply with the ordinance, and that there was also agreement with the technical comment in the experts, the board's experts' And that the aisles will be striped as fire lanes, and that there will be work for a pedestrian connection to the remainder of the site as appropriate. And landscaping would also be provided as shown on the application and in compliance with working with the professionals.
And a loading zone we're going to provide. Loading zone. We're going to add a loading zone.
Yes, and add a loading zone. So we, you'd be striping for fire lanes, marking loading zones, and there was also specifically the representation that the aisles, the drive aisles would be striped for fire zones.
And not to interrupt you, but also the points that Mr. Trimmer brought up about the fire report.
Yes.
That you would meet all the requirements that they stipulated.
Yes.
Any and all recommendations up to fire official?
Right, we'll get an updated report and comply with all of his comments.
Thank you.
What I said before and what Mr. Sipriani just stated, I would make a motion to approve.
I would second that. All of us. That being said, Kathleen, roll call, please.
Mr. Hyman?
Yes.
Mr. Martins?
Yes.
Mr. Rozal?
Yes.
Mr. Trimmer?
Yes.
Ms. Cusano?
Yes.
Dr. Hofstein?
Yes.
Ms. Bradley?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you again for the courtesy of allowing us to go first and forward. Now what?
All right, well, so, of course, you have the remainder of your application on the other phases. I will say that as, you know, you can provide additional testimony if you want, as a courtesy of the new board member, it's particularly, Ms. Cusano has not had the opportunity to view the videos of the prior hearings on those other aspects of the application yet, having been recently appointed. So I don't know that we could come to a vote...
Correct.
...on anything tonight. So if you want to put forward any testimony on these other matters, or if you want to, will we be considering all of them simultaneously, the other remaining?
Well, I think if you allow us, we could have Mr. Borden at least just give you the history of the zoning of the site, and then we could stop. Since you can't vote, we're going to need you to rule on density at some point, and you can't even rule on it until the members are qualified to vote.
I think that the history of the site, which would have been done before, would probably be useful for the board members, and all the more useful if Mr. Borden will speak into the microphone.
Yeah. So, so we'll do the history, and then we'll stop, and then we'll deal with the density whenever the next meeting is. We could act on that.
Thank you.
Is that okay?
We're in agreement on that procedure.
Ian?
Mr. Borden?
I don't know if you need to, it's still part of the application proper, but however you want to handle swearing in and qualifying.
And just for the record, also for the new board members, so as we talked about heading into the bifurcation, there's an application on this overall Phase 1. So the bifurcation allowed for the consideration of the Phase D of Phase 1, which seems like there should be a better way to describe it, but that's how it's described on the hotel, which was what just the vote was on. So there's still pending an application on the other proposed uses in Phase 1, one of which is residential. And as you've heard alluded to, there is a ongoing discussion and perhaps different positions regarding the density calculation for the residential. But that Phase 1 also includes other sites as well. I believe it was medical offices originally and the air dorm. So I think, and Mr. Alfieri will correct me if I'm wrong, that what the intention now is for Mr. Borden to provide some background on the overall development of the site. And by the site, it would probably be the additional phases as well. So it's not just Phase 1, there's, was Phase 2, there's Phase 3 and 4, and then probably hone in on Phase 1 to some degree. So that the idea is that when we actually get to discussing the density and residential and other uses for Phase 1 besides the hotel, that you'll have some background that will hopefully make it easier to consider the matter fairly and in context.
Thank you. So Ian, do you need an exhibit to start this?
Yeah, Anthony, not the one labeled Architecture. It should be, I think it might say site plan, but if you could pull that up. The first one, I believe, is an area, that's it.
So let's just identify each one as we go?
Sure. Okay, so, history of the project. This is Exhibit A3. This was originally introduced back in May, or whenever we first met on this. Actually, the date's up there, March, March 5.
For giving into the microphone.
Oops, sorry. I never have that problem. I think it's 38 years of my wife saying, "Why do you, why do you talk so loud?" Honestly, I think the board members know I'm deaf in one ear. So a lot of times, I'm being loud, I don't know I'm being loud. So I try to throttle myself. But this is one of the very, very few times in my life where I've been told to enunciate more. So I don't have an internal sound filter. So we have Exhibit A3-1, which is an aerial of the property before any construction occurred, and it shows all the various parcels that were part of the project ultimately. And what I'm going to do is talk you through sequentially. You'll see, overlaid on this aerial, the same aerial, you'll see different maps, black and white maps, that are going to build the story on how this project has, has come to be. But before I start with that, I'd like to explain briefly that this, this property had a very particular place in the 2009 master plan. Because the 2009 master plan, the primary objective was to increase commercial opportunities and, and job opportunities in Jackson Township. Jackson Township, geographically, does not enjoy state highways like Howell does on Route 9, or Thomas River on Route 37, or Manchester on Route 37 and 70. So Jackson Township historically has been struggling to develop commercial uses and desirable uses on their county road system that they have. Obviously, most of the county roads are rural. You do have County Line Road and Commodore to some respect, and Veterans to some respect. But the master plan particularly called out this, this area between here, you have Monmouth Road... Road to the north, again, north is to the top right is the last exhibit. You have Monmouth Road, same orientation, Monmouth Road along the top, 195 to the right. To the left here, what I'm pointing at is the parking area of Hurricane Harbor, so we have Six Flags is our neighbor to the south. And obviously, along Monmouth Road, you have some commercial development in Millstone with the Wawa and McDonald's and Burger King, et cetera. But the master plan, that long ago, recognized the unique location of this property, this whole property, and this is before my client or there was any development application pending on this project, but they recognized the unique location of this project as between Six Flags and 195. So this was the crown jewel, if you were, in my opinion, of the potential mixed use or commercial development in Jackson. So where this venture crossing project started is the next exhibit, Anthony, A3-2. In understanding that these properties were owned by different people, I think it is relevant to discuss that, the properties that I'm pointing to to the right, what you're seeing here is the original Phase 1, and that is what's called Lot 2. These lots to the right, which are Lots 3, 4, 5, 6, 19, and 20, were owned by Six Flags, and Lot 1 to the south was owned, Lot 1 was owned by the Vince Garra family. So my client, the Cardinalian Jackson Crossing Associates, purchased Lot 2, which was owned by a family, a family trust out of North Jersey. And we came to the zoning board for an approval in 2017 and 2018. And that approval included the air dome, which I'm pointing to, the athletic fields. So those were the foundations of this project, was the recreational opportunities, air dome and athletic fields and the hotel. The hotel that we just discussed a moment ago was originally approved in 2017 in this location. We had two hotels here at that time. But recognize that the opportunities to do this in an economically feasible fashion, marketing, et cetera, was obviously limited by the limited frontage on Monmouth Road. This part of the property that's all white is special to wetlands. That's why you have the development constrained to this narrow throat. So the frontage was very narrow, you were hidden, the old jug handle at Pine Drive, which is here, and was hidden by these trees that remained on the Six Flags property. So my client recognized the need to try to expand this to encompass all these additional properties, to make this the true commercial destination, a mixed-use destination envisioned by the master plan. So as a result, he did that, and then we go to Exhibit A3-3. So now, once under contract with both the Vince Garra family and the Six Flags folks, we developed a master plan for development of the property. At the time, the property, and it remains, in the highway commercial zone. And the highway commercial zone basically limits uses to retail, commercial, office, restaurant. So the idea behind the general development plan, if the board members are not familiar with that, that's a regional planning document, normally done at the planning board level, to introduce various uses that may or may not be permitted by the ordinance. Basically, to write a master plan ourselves for the property of what we think would be good ideas. So here you have, Lot 2, you recall, is in the center, so that remained as it was, approved already with the air dome and the fields, hotels and large commercial. And then we added some apartments. We added, this is where the mixed-use concept began. And we have apartments over closer to Primeville Road, which is off to the right here, on the Six Flags property, as well as on the Vince Garra property adjacent to Six Flags. We have some recreational, we actually had a cricket field here in the back of the Vince Garra property and some other commercial uses, as well as you see the pad building starting to form along Monmouth Road.
Sorry, did you say cricket?
Cricket.
Okay.
There's a huge demand for cricket, still is, huge demand. Commercializing these things is very difficult, though. One thing my client is not lacking is ideas, and I appreciate that, and I think everybody should. So this general development plan was approved by the zoning board in 2019. The reason it was approved by the zoning board and not the planning board was because we had, I kind of skipped over, we had received the D6 height variance for the air dome. So that began what we now have as the jurisdiction of this project with the zoning board. So because of that, they retained jurisdiction because this was already approved in Phase 1 and Lot 2. So we had the GDP approved by the zoning board in 2019. And included with this were 500 apartments between the two sides that I mentioned, as well as many commercial uses and recreational. Subsequent to that, the few landowners on Anderson Road appealed that approval. They were not happy with some of this development being located close to Anderson Road, particularly this site right here was a Topgolf, so that was particularly offensive to them. They felt it was too close and with the high fencing and whatnot, they felt it was... So they appealed that, and then there were settlement discussions held with their attorney. And as a result of that settlement discussion, we were required to remove these properties, Lots 5, 6, 19, and 20, from the GDP. So that then leads us to Exhibit A3-4. Next, Anthony? And you'll see here, these are Lots 5, 6, 19, and 20, you'll see that there's no development proposed here because of that settlement agreement, so we condensed the GDP onto Lots 2, 3, 4. We kept the two Six Flags properties in the front, as well as Lot 1. The cricket disappeared, replaced by the apartments from the Six Flags property. So the residential yield stayed the same, and that was approved by the board.
And just to be clear, when we agreed to remove that eastern or northern section from the GDP, we didn't agree that we would never...
I'm sorry, are we doing the history now or are we going back into the density issue?
History. No, 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 it has nothing to do with density. I just wanted to just make it clear that we did not agree not to develop the property, we just pulled it out of the GDP and we said if we ever develop it, we'd have to come back for site plan and/or variance approval. I just didn't want it to be implied that we wouldn't touch the property.
And that's a good point, and that is absolutely correct. We did not, yeah, it was just a temporary pause on this until we got a new GDP approved and figured out what to do with the rest of the property. So this GDP that was, this GDP on Exhibit A3-4 was approved in 2020. But at that point in time, and the pause that I mentioned about trying to figure out how best to include Lots 5, 6, 19, and 20, that's where the discussion of an overlay lane use zone came in to be. So as a result of that, in February of 2020, the township committee adopted ordinance 244-57.2, which is the highway commercial mixed-use zone. And the highway commercial mixed-use zone did not, is not labeled for specific lots and blocks, but there were, and I just want to touch on this, but you'll hear more about this when we get into the planning and testimony in the next meeting. But it's important to understand that the highway commercial mixed-use zone, the concept was that they didn't want the zone to be applicable to any single lot. The idea was, again, to go back to this 2009 master plan and creating a commercial mixed-use destination, was they wanted it to be planned regionally and not on a spot lot by spot lot. And so for that reason, the ordinance included tract area requirements that encompass area, width, and depth, that in order to qualify to be considered an HCMU overlay project, conforming HCMU overlay project, you had to comply with those tract requirements. And that's all I'll say on that, but we'll revisit that at the next hearing.
Thank you.
And then we moved into the next, A3-5. Because now that the HCMU zone was in effect, one of the permitted uses in the HCMU zone were warehouses, so we obtained a site plan approval in 2020, I believe it was, for two warehouse buildings, and those are constructed today. Those warehouses did not require any variances. So then the next stop we made was Exhibit A3-6, Anthony?
Can I ask you, if you may, just to stop on the warehouses for a little bit, I just want some clarification. So the warehouses are already built, and my understanding is you've sold, the warehouses are sold? Yes, they're owned by a different party now, they were sold. And so the land was sold and developed by whoever bought it? That's where I was going, so the whole land, building, the whole thing?
Yes.
No longer yours. Okay, thank you.
So after the warehouses were approved in what we called Phase 2, we went back and revisited Phase 1, which now includes Lots 3 and 4 with those pad buildings up front, and we modified this approval, this Phase 1 approval.
So Mr. Borden, can you say that again for me, please?
We amended Phase 1 then, and I'm doing this chronologically, so there is some overlaps, but in 2019 and 2021, we amended Phase 1. And what you see here is the, I believe, the 2021 approval, which, again, you see the fundamental, basic underpinnings of the project remaining. You have the athletic fields in the back, you have the air dome here, you have the commercial pads in the front, which are now constructed, of course, the 7-Eleven, Popeyes, Taco Bell, and the mixed-use building with Taco Bell and others. Starbucks, can't leave out Starbucks. As well as the medical, we had, one of the uses that was very desirable of the site was a medical research, so that's the medical research in here between the air dome and the air dome. And then this amended approval also introduced something that we retain in the project today, which is a parking structure. This is a parking garage here, so that actually is here as well. The research was in front of the garage, but we have a parking garage, and that required a separate D1 variance because a parking garage was not listed as a permitted use in the HCMU zone. It's not listed in any zone in Jackson. It's also important to recognize, I think, I have this in my notes, and it is important to recognize that this project has done a lot of substantial public benefits because we have, recall in that earlier aerial, you had a small eyebrow of a jug handle at Pine Drive, and that became a very much of a difficult issue to deal with. As Mr. Alfieri mentioned earlier in the meeting, we have a very unique situation here with the county line being Monmouth Road. Obviously, we're in Ocean County, but under an agreement with Ocean County, Monmouth County manages the road. They do the engineering, they do the maintenance, so that's why the comment was made that any approval we get in the venture crossing, we have to go to Monmouth County as well.
And to further complicate things, the jug handle was controlled by the state, the NJDOT, so we had to go through an elaborate process to vacate that little jug handle and build this new jug handle that Ian will point out in a moment.
Correct. You see the remnants of the old jug handle here with this dark line, but we developed a design to reroute the jug handle so that it could serve the benefit of accessing these commercial pads, creating those ratables for the town, as well as providing an extended throat and better access at the intersection. We also did substantial amount of work here at what we call the reversing jug handle. Before the project started, Route 537 was widened and divided, so that took away what used to be left turns, for example, into the Vince Garra property, and created these jug handles. So that was very, and all those improvements have been constructed, all the jug handle, the traffic signals, the Monmouth Road improvements, the reversing jug handle improvements, and traffic signal improvements have all been constructed. So that is Exhibit A3-6. Now we move to Exhibit A3-7, which is where we start to now expand our site planning to Lot 1. And here we have what we called Phase 3, which is the southern part of Lot 1, which was a mixed-use, commercial and residential project with 481 apartments and commercial buildings in a mixed-use design. And then we continue on, and that was in 2021, and then we continue with the next Exhibit A3-8. Which is Phase 4, which is the back of the Vince Garra farm, which was approved by the zoning board in 2022 for commercial uses containing a water park, hotel, and an indoor water park. This rear part of Phase 4 has always been, had always been a challenge because obviously it's not visible from the highway. That's, a lot of the environmental constraints have driven a lot of the difficulties in the project and the complexity of developing lane uses because of the lack of access or visibility, more importantly, from Monmouth Road and from 195. So that's where the, and that was approved in 2022. I don't have an exhibit because I prepared these exhibits back in March, but subsequently, in, I guess it was just a month or two ago, and I'll update this for the next hearing, we now have, we've now vacated the Phase 3 and 4 approvals, and the board knows, at least the members that were here, that we have obtained approval for the townhouses in Phase 3 and 4. 510 townhouses in Phase 3 and 4.
And that's the non-editorial presentation of the zoning history without debating density or numbers or anything else?
Correct. And if you don't mind, Anthony, we'll just finish up with A4, because this is simply an aerial, this is March, but it's substantially the same. This is of what the site looks like today. Is there a next one, Anthony? Should be. So here you have what's existing, you have the Phase 1, the air dome, the athletic fields, those pads up in the front, parking at the air dome across the street. That's actually, that's some of the pedestrian interconnectivity that's already been constructed between these front pads and the athletic fields, the warehouses in Phase 2, and you just see Phase 3. Construction had started on Phase 3 and 4 before we came back to the board to amend the approval for townhouses.
And the hotel you approved is where Phase 1 words are today?
Correct, that's earlier. It was approved right here, and now it's been approved for here.
I'm going to take advantage that you talked about the hotel. I forgot to ask, the lease, how long is it for? How many years?
I have no idea.
Oh, it hasn't been signed? We don't touch those, so...
I don't get involved in that. I do engineering, my client does business. I'm sure it's a long time.
You could imagine that... Yeah, for that kind of investment, it should be a long time. And as you could see, a lot of college tuitions were paid as a result of all these plan changes that were made over the years.
Count me in.
And so that's it. I don't know if you want to stop there and leave questions for later. When we do come back, whenever we do, we'll show you what was approved in Phases 3 and 4, so you have the final piece of the zoning puzzle. But otherwise, I think that gives you the history of how we got to today.
Yeah, thank you. I think that that was probably helpful. I don't know if there are any questions regarding the history?
We, I will ask questions at the next hearing to see if everybody was paying attention. We'll have a test, possibly.
Mr. Borden, you seem to misunderstand the way the questions flow.
Misunderstand the roles.
I was actually going to ask you to repeat the whole thing, but I don't want to get killed.
I was going to ask, will you provide updated slides with the approvals that have been given since the journey's set up?
Yeah, because we had prepared this, this testimony was given in March. This testimony was given in March. So the members that were here in March had the pleasure of hearing it for the second time, but thank you for your patience.
And Madam Chair, just so the board members know, the report that we issued February 27, 2025, from the bottom of Page 2 to the top of Page 5 is our written history, which coincides with the testimony that Mr. Borden gave this evening. So while it's not as descriptive, because there's not maps attached, what we tried to do was also in dated order, explain to the board where they were with which project. Because there were points in time where they were here for use variance applications, and after the zone change, there were planning board applications. So sometimes board members say, "Well, I don't think the board ever saw this." Well, it may have been a conforming use went to the planning board. So we have a little, sort of one paragraph per approval of the project up until this year, actually within the report. It ain't great reading, but Mr. Borden and I spent some time making sure that the information was accurate before it was issued.
Yeah, that's a very nice summary of the history of the project.
You know, we have enough guests to read, is what you're saying?
Yeah, we're just...
Yeah. Any other questions or anything for this evening? I know it was a lot to take in for my new people, but any other questions? Mr. Hyman, Mr. Martins? Mr. Peters, any other comments? So do we need Ms. Gina to find a date for them to return? Again, I think Mr. Alfieri likes it here.
Possibly October 29th, otherwise really November 19th.
I heard October 29th, if not then...
Possibly October 29th. We currently have three applications on. I wouldn't recommend the 29th, honestly. They kind of look, kind of looks a little busy.
I don't...
Yeah, I'd say October, November 19th is the league still. I just want people to be, I don't know if I'm the only one who, that's a concern.
I'm sorry, Jean?
It's the League of Municipalities, November 19th.
November 19th?
Yeah.
All right, so the problem with October, let's go back one second.
Okay.
October 29th issue is right now, currently, we have seven members. I don't know where we'll be in seven weeks. But we know for sure that Dr. Hoxton will be here on October 29th. So we may want to keep that in mind. That's first. But November 19th is also the...
The League of Municipalities.
Yeah, that right.
And October 29th, there's already three applications on?
Correct. And they do kind of seem a little bit in-depth. They're not easy bulks.
Yeah, they're not fences, so...
So our choice is to take that date and see what happens, or what's the, and then the 19th of November, the league is on, so we can't do that. So what else is there?
And I can have somebody here, I cannot be here on...
I did skip November 5th. Sorry, it's not in order. We have two applications on for the 5th. Ms. Bradley?
They are right over there.
I'm sorry? They are, okay, I just want to make sure it wasn't me. That's all right.
Do you have one meeting in November?
You read my mind. The November 5th, we have two. Preliminary and final site plan, and then a use variance, if you want to put it on for number three.
And honestly, I mean, there are many, many times where it could be somebody else, but I feel like for the next time for this, I should be here. And I'm sorry, I can't do it that night.
You can't make the 5th, Jean?
No, no.
No, no, I can make the 5th.
Oh.
So could we take November 5th and hopefully we'll get reached? Things drop off and things happen, if you don't mind.
Low expectations, Sal, November 5th.
Just don't put a fourth thing on between now and then, please.
Yeah, they'll be after you anyway.
Oh, yeah, right. Who cares? Put as many as you want.
So we'll move this to number three.
So yeah, so we request, and will Dr. Hoxton be here?
November 5th?
He's still going to be on the board?
He'll be November 5th, correct. Yeah, just October 29th.
Oh, okay, fine.
And while we're here, though, let me ask, anybody else know any conflicts at this point? Okay, just to be honest with you.
Thank you. So we'd request that the announcement be made so we don't have to renotice, please?
Yes, and I request that you...
Extension granted.
Thank you. And therefore, no further notice required for November 5th.
Thank you so much. We'll see you in November. Motion to adjourn?
Motion?
All right. Our next meeting now is not until October the 20th. No.